So the order, please, can we have a roll call?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Shelton.
Here.
Mayor Saleh.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Present.
Councilman Williams.
Present.
All present.
Kathy. Tonight, as we rise for our moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance, if we could all just take an extra special moment to reflect and think about the friends that we have in Haiti and the experiences that they're having to endure at this time and keep those people that are there suffering and those people there who are trying to help relieve that suffering in our thoughts tonight. And with that saying that, if we could all rise for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Shipley, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening?
Need to withdraw item number two. We had some technical difficulties on that one, too.
All right. Any other changes? Seeing no further changes, do we have a motion and a second to approve as amended?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion by the council. Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Brings us to the old business portion of our meeting tonight. Item three, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held January the 7th, 2010. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
No.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the council? Have any comments from the audience? Seeing no further comments, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item four, consider on second and final reading ordinance 091221, amending the Cookville zoning code to establish density bonus provisions for the conversion of non-conforming uses in the R M eight district. Sponsor, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, mayor, as you stated, this ordinance is intended to encourage the conversion of non-conforming uses into conforming uses. The proposed amendment has been approved by the planning commission recommended by the planning department, and we've received no calls or comments since first reading.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion and a second to approve as presented?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no comments, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item five, consider on second and final reading ordinance 091223, rezoning a portion of 1227 North Washington Avenue from R S 10, single-family residential, to C N neighborhood commercial. Sponsor, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, as you may remember, the zoning on this property was split, and this would just bring the entire tract under the same zoning. The proposed rezoning's been approved by the planning commissions, recommended by the planning department, and we've had no calls or comments since first reading.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no comments, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item six, consider on second and final reading ordinance 091224, amendments to the official street map. Sponsor, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, these amendments are necessary due to the addition of several streets in 2009. The amendments have been approved by the planning commission, recommended by the planning department, and we've received no comments since first reading.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have the motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no comments, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Now to the consent agenda, there are three items. Item seven, consider awarding bid for the asphalt hot-cold mix. Consider awarding bid for transformers. And consider approval of price proposals for the T T U flow monitoring study. Do we have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have the motion and a second. Are there any items that need to be pulled to, for discussion? Seeing no items, no discussion, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
And now to the new business portion of the meeting. Item 10, consider on first reading ordinance 100101, amending the Cookville Municipal Code by repealing Title VII, Chapter Eight, adult establishments, and replacing with a new Chapter Eight, sexually oriented businesses. Sponsor, Mr. Jim Shipley.
Mayor and council, this, this ordinance replaces Title IX, Chapter Eight of the Municipal Code and establishes new licensing requirements and regulations for sexually oriented businesses. It removes the location restrictions in the municipal code, and those restrictions are addressed in the zoning code. It reduces the current application fee from $1,000 to $100, and the current renewal fee from $500 to $50. Our current fees were considered to be very unreasonable. And it sets the hours of operation between 8:00 A.M. and 12:00 midnight, Monday through Saturday, and state law requires these businesses to be closed on Sundays and legal holidays. And I'd like to introduce Scott Burkhold, attorney from Chattanooga, who has dealt with a lot of sexually oriented ordinances and cases across the country. Scott? And I know your presentation's going to be probably pretty tough since we don't have the PowerPoint.
Actually, what Ms. Fowler has done is provide you with a copy of the printout. So this is exactly what was in my electronic PowerPoint presentation.
Do we need a motion?
Before we begin, don't you think that we need to bring this to the floor?
Yeah, yeah. I'm forgetting my Roberts over the border.
Oh, that's fine.
I move to approve ordinance 0100101, repealing Title IX, Chapter Eight of the Cookville Municipal Code on first reading, and that we enter into the record of this meeting all the secondary effects information that we have previously received in both hard copy and electronic format, which is about to be gone over relative to this ordinance, and that we're considering tonight.
Okay, we have our motion now. Do we have a second?
Second.
We do have our second. Okay, and now Scott, feel free to take the floor.
Mayor and council members, the purpose of my discussion tonight is to focus on the legislative predicate for regulations of sexually oriented businesses, AKA adult entertainment, AKA adult bookstores, strip clubs, and things like that. There is a strong foundation, you might say, in the law for cities regulating sexually oriented businesses, and the cornerstone of this area of law is the bottom slide on the first page of the presentation, and that is a case called City of Renton versus Playtime Theater. This is a case from 1986 where the United States Supreme Court said that a local government doesn't have to engage in an expensive study and do all of its own research, but can reasonably rely upon the experiences of other communities in the state or around the country and what experiences they've suffered or had in dealing with adult businesses. The basis for regulating adult businesses is not just that they're not liked, it can't be moral approbation, but rather the basis legally for regulating sexually oriented businesses are the negative secondary effects that those types of businesses are associated with. Many months ago, you received a large amount of information, studies, reports, expert witness documents that have been compiled in Tennessee and around the country that thoroughly document the adverse secondary effects associated with this category of land uses. And tonight, my discussion is not going to address every single document that you received that would keep us here through next week, but what I am going to do is hit the highlights and cover the main points of why cities are allowed and counties are allowed to regulate sexually oriented businesses. I do want to say that the city, although it's repealing an ordinance that was adopted some 15 years or so ago, is not riding on an entirely clean slate because it does, this ordinance that's before you tonight is largely modeled after an ordinance that we wrote for Knox County, Tennessee, in 2005. That was upheld by the federal court in Knoxville as constitutional, and then on appeal to the United States Court of Appeals for the Sixth Circuit, was also upheld as constitutional by the U.S. Court of Appeals. So this ordinance is basically trying to follow a track that's been laid down in the case law over many years, culminating with this decision most recently in February of 2009, in which the Knox County ordinance was upheld. So in a lot of ways, this mirrors what was upheld in more of the state-of-the-art case law, the recent cases. On page two of your handout, you'll see that I've summarized five basic categories for the sources of secondary effects information. Number one are land use studies. These are studies that have been done by planning departments, land use agencies, private companies, surveying the impact of adult entertainment establishments on communities over the last 30 years. Number two are crime reports. These are police narrative reports or summaries of crimes in and around adult businesses. Number three, the third category is judicial evidence. And this is a little bit different. When we talk about evidence, we usually don't talk about cases that the courts have decided, but in this circumstance, the U.S. Supreme Court has repeatedly held that local governments can rely on the experiences of other jurisdictions, and part of that is relying on the adverse secondary effects that are documented in prior court decisions. For example, I live in Chattanooga, and in 1997, the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Sixth Circuit upheld the Chattanooga ordinance, which is very similar to the one under your consideration tonight. In that opinion, which is part of your legislative record, the court talked about illicit sexual behavior, unsanitary conduct, crime-related adverse impacts of sexually oriented businesses in Chattanooga. Cookville can rely on what Chattanooga has experienced when it proactively seeks to regulate adult establishments here. Number four are anecdotal data, that's citizen testimony and reports of people in the public, that many of those are also included in this documentation. And then number five is citizen testimony. Basically, you've received a summary of the secondary effects reports. Altogether, I think it's about 1,800 pages of documentation, but you've received a summary that sort of hits the highlights or abstracts the major studies that have been done over the last 25 years. When we talk about the record that's been compiled over the last several months for the Cookville ordinances that are under consideration tonight, we really talk about several different categories of secondary effects. Secondary effects is kind of a legalese term. It's one that's judicially created by the courts, but what it means are the adverse impacts of adult establishments, both inside the establishment and on their surrounding environment. There are several categories of secondary effects, just like there's many different sources of secondary effects information. When we use the term secondary effects, we're talking about several categories. One of them are personal and property crimes and the public safety risks that are associated with those. Several studies in the record demonstrate this, including studies from Garden Grove, California, Los Angeles, California, Houston, New York. They've all talked about the secondary effect of crime associated with adult businesses, and whenever you have a crime risk, there's a public safety risk associated with it. Number two are the types of crimes that you sort of expect with sexually oriented entertainment, including lewdness, paid sexual contact, prostitution. The Court of Appeals, in our decision upholding the Knox County ordinance less than a year ago, talked about those types of specific crimes that were documented in the record, and those same documents are here tonight. The Diamonds and Lace case, which I talked about just a few minutes ago, was one of those that documented that type of behavior. On the third page are the third category of conduct, and that is public health. In the Broadway Books case versus Roberts, which was another Chattanooga case from many years ago, from 1986, the county health official for Hamilton County, Tennessee, talked about the types of diseases that could be spread by illicit sexual behavior that's been documented to occur in adult bookstores and backrooms of strip clubs and things like that. Number four, there's undesirable behavior and other adverse impacts associated with alcohol consumption. So this ordinance has regulations relative to alcohol consumption as well. And the Supreme Court of the United States, in a case called California versus LaRue, recognized those adverse impacts. One of the more recent cases at the bottom of that slide at the top of page three is a case that I litigated for the City of Daytona Beach, which is called Daytona Grand versus City of Daytona Beach, where they really talked about how alcohol takes the types of adverse behaviors that are occurring in that environment anyways and exacerbates it because obviously people are under the influence of alcohol, their inhibitions are lowered, and their judgment is often impaired. On the bottom slide in page, the fifth category are the negative impacts on surrounding properties. There are many studies in the record that talk about the zoning predicate for regulating the location of adult businesses, which is what the second ordinance that's before you tonight will address in the zoning code. And some of the more recent studies include those from Fort Worth, Texas, which was a survey of appraisers. A lot of these are certified M I appraisers that have been studied about the adverse impact on adult businesses being located close to other types of land uses. So when we get to the zoning code, we'll see that churches, schools, residential neighborhoods, those types of land uses are protected, and to prevent a clustering of adult businesses, adult businesses are not allowed to locate next to each other, so they're also dispersed from one another. If you turn to page four of the presentation, I've sort of listed 10 or so of the studies, journal articles, expert reports that are in the record before you that talk about these adverse secondary effects. As you can see, they range from very large cities to smaller, more moderate-sized cities like Cookville. Garden Grove, California is in there, Whittier, California, Jackson County, Missouri, is an extensive secondary effects report that not only surveys all this literature that's out there and the reports and the studies that have been done over the last 30 years, but also goes into extensive depth to answer arguments from the industry where they've hired their own experts to say, no, these places don't cause crime, they don't have adverse impacts on surrounding areas. And so an expert report from Jackson County, Missouri, sort of goes through line by line and shows the flaws and the methodology of what many of the plaintiffs or the adult entertainment industry have tried to argue in recent years. That Jackson County case, for example, is a case that we litigated in 2009, 2008 and 2009, involved a place in, right outside Kansas City, Missouri. Jackson County is where Kansas City, Missouri is, so it's a very large county, and that particular case involved a challenge to an ordinance very much like the one before you tonight, and that was resolved by the federal court in Kansas City in the county's favor. And then number 10 is criminal justice policy review. There are a lot of different categories of adult businesses, and the industry likes to subdivide their establishments even more. And so in the criminal justice policy review article from 2008, they addressed the issue of retail-only or off-site adult bookstore, do stores that don't have on-premises peep show booths or nude dancing, but just are sexually explicit stores, stores that specialize in sexually explicit merchandise, do those have adverse impacts? And this criminal justice policy review article looks at the empirical data demonstrating that they do have adverse impacts similar to other adult entertainment establishments, so that they are properly brought within that category of establishments and land uses that are regulated by these ordinances. At the bottom of page four, I just quoted directly from the draft ordinance is what the rationale for this, for this regulation is, and that is that sexually oriented businesses as a category of commercial uses are associated with a wide variety of adverse secondary effects. It's important to remember that we're not targeting a particular business or this isn't a public nuisance action dealing with a particular address, but rather we're dealing with this class of establishments as a whole and looking at the nature of the data that deals with strip clubs, adult bookstores, adult theaters, sexual device shops. We're looking at a broad variety of evidence to regulate this category. We're regulating the class, therefore, the evidence concerning that class of establishment is what the Supreme Court has said is the standard, and that is reasonably believed to be relevant to the problem that the city's addressed. That's what the city has to do. It has to rely on evidence that's reasonably believed to be relevant to the secondary effects of adult businesses. And I would submit to you that what's in the record tonight is much more than necessary to do that, it's more than ample. At the top of page five is a further specification of the rationale for this ordinance, and that is each of the foregoing secondary effects that are identified in the ordinance preamble and findings is a substantial government interest that the government has, that the city has a legitimate interest in regulating to prevent. One case that comes to mind is a case out of Spokane, Washington, dealing with retail-only adult bookstores, where the court said, well, yeah, you maybe not have the prostitution or some of the other types of secondary effects, but you're going to have the problems with sexually explicit litter, people being accosted that are going into nearby businesses. There was testimony in the record and evidence in the record of dentists and other retail shops, real estate shops, suffering adverse impacts on their businesses, and then residents nearby suffering adverse impacts in their neighborhood because of the presence of the patronage for these sexual shops. At the bottom of page five, I list several cases that are relied upon. Remember, at the beginning of this presentation, I talked about the third category of evidence that cities can rely on being judicial opinions, and there are several judicial opinions, and I've listed six here, that are in the record for this ordinance that uphold the regulation of retail adult bookstores, including the case out of Knox County, which is the first one listed. On page six, and this is page six of seven, we finally go into a little bit more detail and talk about a little bit more the rationale for regulating adult businesses. And what it says there is that the government interest in regulating to prevent the secondary effects of adult businesses exists independent of any comparative analysis between adult and non-adult businesses. Well, what does all that mean? What that means is that, for example, in Louisville, which is one of the cities that we represent against 22 or so adult businesses, the adult businesses wanted to come in and say, okay, maybe we have problems, but we looked at this biker bar down the street, or we looked at this non-adult tavern or bar that had a lot of calls for service to the police. You know, they get called more often down there at that other place that's not an adult entertainment establishment than they do at our establishment. And that sort of has a visceral layman's type of appeal as an argument, but the problem is it doesn't de-justify what goes on in adult, regulating adult establishments. You have to regulate adult to deal with the specific types of problems that adult entertainment establishments engender, and the fact that you may have a biker bar or an under-21 night spot that generates a lot of problems for the police, it does not de-justify the regulations here. And that's what the federal court said in the Louisville case and upheld that ordinance or upheld that regulation. Another thing that we point out in this, in this portion of our discussion, because this is what the plaintiffs challenge when they sue cities on this issue, they say, well, we've looked at the calls for police service, and there's not as much of a problem with our establishments than some other place that we're comparing ourselves to. And what's important is a lot of these studies that the industry rely on, rely on calls for police service, not actual crime data. And I won't get into the technical aspects of crime and uniform crime report compilation, but the bottom line is that calls for police service are only very weakly correlated to actual crimes. Couple examples would be if I get in a fight at a bar down the street, I may go to the hospital and get stitched up because my lip is busted, and I make out my police report from the hospital, and in most cities, if you just looked at calls for police service, your hospitals would be hotspots for crime. But that's not the case. Calls for police service are not a good measure of crime. They measure police activity, they don't measure actual crime. Uniform crime reports and NiBRA reports are more appropriate for that, but a lot of the industry studies rely on that. Finally, at the bottom of page six, what's included in your record are some studies, and you each have printed copies of scholarly criminology journal articles from Professor Richard McLeary. He's a Ph.D. out of the University of California, Irvine, where he's been tenured for about 35 years. He's authored many books and articles and testified as an expert witness in several cases. Basically, he summarizes the findings of all these studies, not just the ones done by him, but by many other various individuals and agencies and municipalities across the country, and that's the last page of the slide. There's three main findings by these expert witnesses, and that is the secondary effects predicate is robust, there's a strong criminological theory that predicts these types of adverse effects, and that criminological theory is confirmed in a wide variety of places over a long period of time. Number two, there's a substantial government interest in regulating adult businesses to prevent the identified secondary effects. And number three, the industry counter-studies are based on changing methodologies and faulty data that modern criminologists do not use to actually measure crime. And one thing that the Kentucky Supreme Court pointed out in one of the cases that we litigated, bearing on the point that calls for police service don't reveal crime, if people are in a backroom at a strip club engaging in a prostitution act or engaging in illicit sexual behavior in an adult bookstore, there's nobody there to really report it. The guy in the next booth's not going to go call the police because his neighbor got more for his 100 bucks than he did. It's just, it's just one of those situations where vice crimes or so-called quote-unquote victimless crimes are not the ones that are discovered through 911 calls or calls to the police. Those are typically discovered, like they were in Louisville and Chattanooga and several places around the country, through very expensive, very intense undercover surveillance operations that cost a lot of manpower and a lot of hours to interpret. So that's why when we look at these studies and all this data, we look at actual crime and police narrative reports, not so much calls for service logs. And with that, I've probably given you more information than, than necessary, but I wanted to lay the proper predicate so that it would be in the record of this meeting prior to the adoption of any ordinances regulating adult businesses, because I, I would like to commend the city for taking a very important step at a time where the city's not in a crucible, so to speak, with pending litigation on this issue. A lot of times I'm up here, when there's a case ongoing, it makes things a lot more difficult, but the city manager contacted me many months ago in a desire to be proactive, and this is the result of many months of work, and I want to compliment Mr. Mills, who was up here previously. A lot of work went into the zoning ordinance on his part, and so it's been a pleasure to work with the staff, and I want to commend them for being proactive on this issue.
All right, thank you very much.
I do want to say something for the record, that I definitely recommend this, and I think we're very fortunate to have somebody of Mr. Burkhold's capability to review this for us and help us prepare this ordinance. The ordinance that we currently have dates back to the mid-1990s. The Tennessee Legislature has significantly modified these laws as recently as 2007, so our ordinance really needs to be updated. I do want to point out that the existing businesses are grandfathered in, and this will apply to new businesses, and, and I do definitely recommend the zoning ordinance be changed in conjunction with this, which I think I've provided each member of the council a copy of the state, new state statute in 2007 that provides that an adult-oriented establishment shall not locate within 1,000 feet of a childcare facility, a private, public, or charter school, a public park, a residence, or a place of worship, which, and that definition is carried forward into the new zoning ordinance that will go into effect with this. So from a legal standpoint, I definitely recommend both these ordinances that are on the agenda for tonight.
I think it's important to note, and I know we have one representative from, from one of the businesses here, I think it's important to note that the existing businesses that, that are in town, by and large, have certainly played by the rules, and I don't think that inference needs to be made that any one particular, and I know this young lady has, has been at our meeting several times talking, so I just want to make sure for the record that there was no inference that these particular things were applying to anything in particular that their business has done. As it was being read, I, I thought that was important to note because she has tried, I know Kristi O'Conne has tried to always be a, a very good citizen and business person in this community and try to make sure that she was doing it the right way.
Absolutely. Any further comments from the council? I'd like to open up to the audience as well, if anybody has a comment.
I'd like to thank you for your hard work and your thorough presentation today, giving us a lot of things to read in the past, and appreciate you coming up from Chattanooga to present this information to us today. I did have a question for our legal counsel, though. The, removing this from the municipal code doesn't water down at all the legalities of us as far as enforcement by putting, taking it out of the municipal code and put it in the zoning code, does it?
No, in fact, I think these ordinances taken together actually strengthen our code and give our, our enforcement officers a much better and more clear definition of how to go about inspecting businesses and citing those that don't comply. So no, I think this actually very, very much strengthens our businesses, both within respect to how the businesses themselves are conducted and where businesses can be located. I think that this, by adopting this state statute, we really come in, in line with all of the other, you know, counties and other cities in the state that have, that have looked at their things, and I think that this really is a, a very much improved enforcement tool and more specific than what we currently have. I think what we currently have is vulnerable to significant legal challenges.
And it, this ordinance does refer to the zoning code. In section 9-804, paragraph A, subsection four, says a sexually oriented business as defined herein is not, is not in compliance with the interior configuration requirements of this chapter, or is not in compliance with the location requirements of the Cookville Municipal Code, zoning code, or Tennessee state law. And that, that is prefaced by the city clerk shall issue a license unless the business is not in compliance with the configuration, or is not in compliance with the location requirements in the zoning. in the zoning code. So it does refer to it.
And bears noting on the point that Mr. Shipley just made, someone can be in compliance by being a non-conforming use or being grandfathered.
Right.
Yeah.
Could I answer your question, Mr. Mills?
Yes, thank you very much.
Any further discussion by the council? Seeing no further discussion, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Item eleven, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance zero-nine-one-two-two-five amendments to the Cookeville zoning code concerning regulations for sexually-oriented businesses, sponsor Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, I think we've discussed, or you've discussed, the reasons for this amendment. The amendments have been prepared by legal counsel. Basically, what the ordinance does, it amends several sections of the zoning code relative to the regulation of sexually-oriented business, including our definition section to insert numerous terms and definitions. It amends section two oh six, additional standards, to insert standards for the location of these businesses. It amends section two-twenty-two, the general commercial district, to identify these type establishments as a use permitted in the CG district when meeting specific requirements, and it also amends our chart of permitted uses to show sexually-oriented businesses as a use permitted in the CG district. Our attorney referenced the separation requirements. The zoning code will limit sexually-oriented business to the CG general commercial zone only, subject to the separation standards specified by state law. The amendments have been approved by the Planning Commission or recommended by the Planning Department.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion and a second for approval?
Second.
We have the motion and second, discussion by the council. Seeing no further comments or discussion, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item twelve, consider reappointment to the Cookeville Municipal Planning Commission, sponsor Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, the term of Aaron Bernhardt for service on the Planning Commission has expired. As you know, the members of the commission are appointed by the city council for five-year terms. The Planning Department recommends for the reappointment of Mr. Bernhardt, and he's been contacted and agreed to continue to serve if reappointed.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion and a second? Some move. We have our motion and a second to reappoint Mr. Aaron Bernhardt to the Planning Commission. Any discussion by the council?
Certainly, we're always grateful when people step up and fill the needs for the community, and that's always a good thing.
Having served on the Planning Commission for four years, it is a really tough job, and I'd just like to commend all of them for what they do. It's not an easy task. And also commend Mr. Mills and Mr. Littrell and the entire Planning Codes Department down there. We are very lucky in the city of Cookeville.
Any further discussion by the council, comments from the audience? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Item thirteen, consider reappointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals, sponsor Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, the term of Jane Flat for service on the board has expired. The members of this board are appointed by the city council for three-year terms. Ms. Flat's been contacted and has agreed to continue to serve if reappointed, and we would recommend for her reappointment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have that as a motion?
No approval.
We have our motion and a second. Any discussion by the council?
Well, what I said before, we always appreciate people serving. I realized if I said it the first time, I need to say it the second time, too, but that's a great service that these folks do for our community.
That's good. Any further comments? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. I'll give you one more item here on tonight's agenda. Item fourteen, hold a public hearing on an annual progress report on the plan of services for the following annexation areas: the Old Sparta Road, Horace Lewis Road, Old Bridge Road, Fallingwater River, Buck Mountain Road, Dry Valley Road, Shipley Road, East Highway Seventy North, Interstate Forty, Matheny Cora Road, West Cookeville Interstate Forty, O'Neill West Twelfth Street, Presley West Twelfth Street, Shagrag Road, God Dodson Branch Road, Rebecca Place, Bunker Hill Road, Bunker Hill Road, Love Lady Road areas. Sponsor, Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, as you know, the Tennessee code requires that we prepare this annual report and publish it in the local paper and hold a public hearing, which is what we're doing tonight. There are currently thirteen areas that have been annexed by the city since 2000 for which services were specified in plan of services and which some services remain to be completed. Of course, I don't have the map here, but the report was recently published in the Herald-Sus, and I think, do you have the map in front of you that identifies the thirteen areas?
Yes, we do.
You'll be glad to know that five areas have had the full plan of services completed and will no longer have to be included in our annual report. Those areas are the Shipley Road, Matheny Road, O'Neill West Twelfth, Presley West Twelfth, and God Dodson Branch Road areas. So those areas, all services have been provided as specified in the plan of services. For the remaining eight areas, planning, zoning, and inspection services have been provided as specified. Sanitary sewer has not yet been provided to any of these areas. Water service has been provided as specified to all but two of the areas. One fire hydrant is all that needs to be completed in the East Highway Seventy Interstate Forty area, and the city has not yet obtained the water service area for much of the West Cookeville Interstate Forty area. Natural gas service improvements are expected to be completed in the East Highway Seventy I Forty area within sixty days, but remain to be completed in the West Cookeville Interstate Forty area and the Bunker Hill Road, Love Lady Road areas. The provision of electrical service has been provided to most of the territory within the Old Bridge Road, Fallingwater River, and Buck Mountain Dry Valley Road areas, to approximately half of the territory within the West Cookeville Interstate Forty area, and all of the East Highway Seventy I Forty area except along North Salem Road, and should be completed within sixty days in the Shagrag Road and Rebecca Place, Bunker Hill Road areas. Street lighting still needs to be provided in approximately half of the West Cookeville I Forty area and should be completed within sixty days in the Shagrag Road area and the Bunker Hill Love Lady Road areas. As you can see, there's been a lot of progress made in the past year. That's our general summary of the report. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try and address them.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mills. And I would imagine we should offer any public comments, anybody that's here tonight, welcome to come up and be a part of this planning services hearing. Seeing no comments, we'll accept this, and thank you, Mr. Mills.
Thank you.
And that concludes our regularly scheduled agenda. If at this time, we open up the floor for a hearing of citizens' indoor delegations, and I'll first offer to the city council, if you all have any announcements.
Can't think of anything.
And if there's anyone from the public that would like to come and share your opinions, we'll give you up to three minutes at the lectern. Seeing no comments, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
All right. Quodest one we've handled, while.